This meeting is being recorded.
So this is kindergarten. And it tells you here that kindergarten through sixth grade. The content is organized into recurring strands and so that shifts. Set from sixth grade, seventh and eighth grade. That's important knowledge to have. Um, so the concepts within each grade level, they build on prior knowledge. They're supposed to prepare students for the next grade level and establish a foundation in science. So in kindergarten, the following concepts will be addressed in each strand. So we're going to see what concepts are addressed in each strand. So we have scientific and engineering practices. And that's sort of the goal, if you will, like, as I've looked at much of the science teaks. Is getting Texas kids to be more engineering minded, right? To question more, to like, wanna build and, and um, to have this sort of knowledge and skills to be able to um, sort of pursue their questions and their um, creative experiments. And we want them to, to sort of be interested in that. And beginning to build that foundation, that love of inquiry and science and exploration early on in kindergarten. Um, so do, do, do scientific inquiry is planned? And deliberate investigation of the natural world using scientific and engineering practices? So that's all it is. Scientific inquiry, it's planned and deliberate investigation of the natural world and kindergarten is a great place to start in that investigation, right? And getting them to practice and question. Scientific methods of investigation are descriptive, correlative, comparative, or experimental. The method chosen should be appropriate to grade level. And the question being asked, student learning for different types of investigation, including descriptive investigations, which would have no hypothesis that tentatively answers the research question and involve collecting data and recording observations without making comparisons. Correlative and comparative investigations, which have hypothesis, right? So we can make comparisons and this is better than that, or we can make predictions based on, you know, prior knowledge. Relationship involving collecting data, measuring all of those things. Obviously, we're not gonna start off the whole kindergarten shebang, scientific inquiry with stuff like that, we're gonna build. So, but we're going to build scientific practices, students asking questions. Scientific, uh, excuse me, engineering practices, identifying problems, designing solutions, using appropriate tools and materials. To support instruction in the science content standard, it is recommended that districts integrate science, scientific and engineering practices through classroom or outdoor investigation for at least eighty percent of the instructional time. So districts are recommended, and this is the law, the teaks are the law. Eighty percent of your instruction time should be engineering, like, practices, like an activity and or outdoor investigation for eighty percent of the time, classroom time, dude, that's devoted for science. So then you have the specific um, different areas here. You have um, cause I'm reading through all of them and we're still in the definition portion of it. They have to, um, they're gonna be looking at particular recurring themes. Wait, what is this? Okay, so it's gonna be matter and properties, force and motion, earth and space, organisms and environment, nature of science, and you'll see them here. Recurring concepts and themes. Matter and its properties, and it's not gonna be that huge, that matter and its properties section for kindergarten. It will get larger as the children get older. We're gonna jump now to fourth grade and you'll see those same strands, cause that's where you should begin. Um, and you'll see it's the same sort of introduction, overarching introduction that is there in kindergarten is here in fourth and fifth grade because they're sort of dictate dictated under the same strands.
Basically, everything is just, everything is pretty much the same. It just goes into more detail. As you get, as you get older. Pretty much kindergarten.
You do a deeper investigation of the same concepts. The same ideas, you know, we might talk about push and pull with magnets. And then in, you know, sixth or seventh grade, we're actually like talking about it in very more specific terms. And we're talking about, exactly, why are they repelling and thinking about like, the, what's happening on a you know, uh, what is it called? The polarization or what makes them uh, reject each other? Attack or reject? And so for them to understand that, um, obviously gets more complex. And so here you have your different areas. You have these different recurring themes, science, um, scientific engineer and practices, they have to still do the same things. Demonstrate safe practices and the use of safety equipment during classroom and field investigation. And there's T E A approved safety standards that all science teachers have to use, right? And you, you should have looked at them before you test again, for sure. We'll look them up together before we, before we leave.
Um, that would be under to work in the lab with the kids in middle school, right?
Right, that's right. In, in any uh, lab, so we can just like right here.
Oh yeah, well, when you do like hands-on with the little ones and what.
Well, fifty? I don't think that this is it. Sometimes they have a lot of just. No, no. No, this is not it. It has to be like STEM. Subject areas, sorry. Um, cause I wanna be able to find this for you, cause it is important for you to, to have looked at it and since it is mentioned.
Cause maybe we search it on the task.
Science, safety laws and rules, safety information and resources. Chemical safety, sixth grade science. Okay, so here's a PDF of your. Um, science teaks PDF. Um, science, well, here's the science teak links and here's the safety Texas education, safety standards. Take a look at this PDF. So kindergarten through twelfth grade and um, I wouldn't, you know, memorize this, but I certainly would read through it at least once, you know what I mean? What are the um, guidelines? For.
Wearing, wearing goggles, the glove. Basic stuff. No horse playing, tie up your shoes, proper shoes.
Guided discovery, the teacher presents students with a problem and the teacher, teacher designed or student, student design develops a research design to test hypothesis and you know, you walk about, school practice, independent study. Um, laboratory and investigation. But I guess field investigation should do these things. And they should do those things always. This is an excellent resource that I'm gonna put for everyone in the in the science folder, um, just. But let me see, science students should not expect the teacher to shoulder the entire responsibility for a safe environment in the classroom. Each student must contribute to the safety of others. And that's so true and something that like really, when you have a conversation with your students and it's very easy to win their respect and, and their, the buying, but when you, you sort of presented to them as even as a fourth grader in a science class or you know, I was lucky enough, I kind of went to a what I would s- um, consider a fancy school district, um, while my dad was going to school. We lived in Austin and um, one, one school was sort of like a, a less fancy school and then that when we moved to Round Rock, it was like a very fancy school. And I remember that's when I did my first research project and I think it was in the fifth grade then. Um, or maybe fourth grade, but we had a science like classroom that we would go to and they had like lab tables. And so we did little things and it was really hands-on and fun and, and got me very interested in, uh, that's supposed to be the norm for everyone. It's supposed to be, yeah, that we're able to, but I remember um, the elementary in the valley and, and we sort of like didn't have labs as often, you know, um, I think they tried to whenever possible, like I know we grew things in the classroom like lima beans and um.
Yeah, you know, now that I think about it, elementary kids, I don't remember that any lab stuff, not that I can recall. I know middle school did, but.
Yeah, middle school for sure. That was when we, we started, but it should be at, um, you, you read eighty percent. The state says supposedly, oh my god, I hear that. Being crawled off and was crawling around on the floor. Goodness, I cannot handle this. Business. I've had five children myself and I never thought I would have to go through any sort of thing again. And now I have.
Yeah, yep, happy then, like, you have to be in top of them all the time.
Yes, like children, I've been, yes, um, it's been crazy. Um, so it very important for um, us to get that buy-in from them and it helps with classroom management, you know? And I always told my classes that we were a team and I believed it. We, we were a team, you know? I had certain goals that I needed to achieve, that I wanted to achieve, that I knew they could achieve and, but I needed their buy-in, their help, you know? Um, and so building that classroom environment, um, classroom culture, getting them to understand the importance of safety, right? Talking, having these discussions about why it's so important. And that you can't shoulder the responsibility if someone is gonna be being silly with like chemicals or even something as simple as and I always use this as an example that anytime you're gonna go to a new environment, classroom environment, and this is especially true for science classes, cause they get to go to different, you know, places to pick specimens and whatnot. Um, the, the, depending on the environment, there has to be a conversation, a discussion about expectations and rules and safety, like a reitera- a reiteration or uh, recon- convening or a conversation about, you know, y'all are gonna go out to the creek behind the middle school to pick lab specimens, you know, pick up specimens, collect things, then a conversation about, okay, guys, eh, when we got permission to go there, but in order to um, go there and for everyone to have a good time and do what we need to do, everybody has to be safe. Like what would it take for us to be safe out there? What sort of things can we not have happen, like pushing each other in the creek?
Yeah, right.
Right, um, whatever, somebody gets hurt and have these conversations beforehand and say, we're scientists, this is a professional setting, like I know the creek is fun. But we're going out there for a purpose and as scientists, each and every one of you. And so you, we have to remember the expectations and get, sort of get them in that mindset. Every single time that happens, you, you can't say like, oh, well, they signed the safety contract in the beginning of the school year. No, that's not enough. Like, yes, they signed the contract.
Forget about it.
You could forget about the contract as soon as it was signed. You have to talk to the kids, you have to remind the kids, you have to hold them accountable and really have these conversations with them every single time. Um, and you know, if they feel like they're scientists, they're more apt to take it seriously. Um, and they are a little scientist every single time, you know, when, I have a first grader and a second grader and um, you know, my second grader wants to be a scientist, she doesn't wanna know specifically what she wants to do, but she knows that has something to do with science.
No, that's awesome. Good for her.
I know, and I'm tell, and I'm telling your mama, you're a scientist already and she really is. I mean, she's so, that just.
You know what? And don't let her forget that because you know what? Now as an adult, I remember I loved science in middle school. I mean, I just absolutely loved it. You go into high school, you get into all these um, deadlines, like tests and whatnot and expectations that you forget, you literally forget your passions, what you like. And you know what? When I went to college, I still remember that I liked science, but I kind of forgot that it was more of the lab environment.
Exactly.
And so I still did something regarding science, but you know, my passion was kind of more biology. And I don't know, I just, I just forgot, it just.
You are still a scientist going into teaching, I will tell you and I will argue with anyone that teachers are the biggest scientists. There is no hypothesis larger than the damn objective we have for our lesson with the variable of students, with the variable level of skill, of language proficiency, of home life, of like socio-economic, of support. All of the different variables of humanity that you get within a classroom and you are to achieve a particular objective with mastery over and over and over again. With the variables changing on a day-to-day basis, there is no more scientists, you know what I mean? This is like such a high level. Um, you can do it well. Obviously, you can go in there and do a terrible job and, and you wouldn't, you know, get that badge, but to, to, to go and no one goes in there wanting to do a bad job. It's overwhelming and I have failed at times at a lesson and had to say, you know, with, with a particular class and go back to the drawing board and say like, okay, what went wrong here? And it is a science, sometimes the experiment fails and it is a daily experiment.
By, by failing, what do you mean by that? Like maybe the kids didn't get the concept or?
Right, like I assessed and mastery wasn't achieved or a particular activity really taint and like conversation didn't go, maybe the, the like preliminary concepts that were needed or prerequisites weren't, you know, fully understood for them to get, be able to do a certain activity. And so I have to go back and say, okay, what, what, what was missing? That they weren't able to like, um, as a group. Yeah, as a group analyze eh, um, this particular piece for tone, right? Weren't they able to achieve that?
Who would you go to? Did, I mean, would you go to other science teachers to maybe help you with something or?
Absolutely, absolutely, absolutely.
Names, teachers in particular, just them, right?
Yes, absolutely. And who want to have that communication? That's part of the P P R is having a communication and a dialogue utilizing your resources with other science teachers and even other teachers, you know? If you are um, teaching seventh grade, I would have loved it if a science teacher had come to me and said, you know what? We're gonna do a lab. I want my kids to turn in an awesome lab report. So if they can, you know, revise it and I would have loved to have taken, you know, instructional time to have them revise their lab and you, you know, help them get their words out regarding their science experiment. It's something you totally can and should be doing. You want them not so much at the earlier levels at the fourth grade, they're not really writing out full-blown lab reports, but certainly writing out um, questions, steps, taking down data, um, writing um, predictions based on observations. Um, and then as they get older, that becomes, and we take a look at the eighth grade, which we'll go look at right now.
Um, I mean, can you imagine at that age? I think it, it's kind of something very rewarding for them to look at that seven and be like, I know I have a daughter that loves growing beans or growing something and look at it grow. It's just something pretty sweet for them to experience.
They love it. And I, my, my ex-husband is like, he is a scientist and like, I always used to tell him and he doesn't have a degree and so he doesn't like consider himself a valid scientist, but he totally is the most scientist of scientists. And he uh, has an AC business, so he knows how to fix ACs and heaters and all that stuff and is literally a scientist. So he grows, um, and when we were married, made me this like raised garden bed and then like inside the house and put these lights and we grew food indoors, um, like year-round. We grew gourds and the girls got to like watch and help. We grew strawberries indoor. It was very fun and very, very cool. So the girls like have, um, you know.
That's why they wanna be scientists.
Yeah, cause they are, they literally have been since they were babies. And that's what I try to tell them, you guys already are scientists. You just don't have degrees yet. Daddy was a scientist, is a scientist. And um, they just need to sort of understand that and never lose that. And we need to show it to our kids. They need to understand that you think that you have to get a degree in order to have that. You can um, through the practice of investigating and learning and growing and doing, be a scientist also. So right now we're taking a look at eighth grade. So we look at fourth grade and I wanna take a look at eighth grade. And so uh, actually, let's go move back and let's do sixth grade, cause we're gonna look at the overarching. So we have sixth grade science is an inter- interdisciplinary in nature, meaning it ha- it's gonna bring pieces of physical science, it's gonna be bring piece, pieces of like chemistry, pieces of uh, biology interdisciplinary in the science way, getting them prepared for high school, but they are going to be still dictated by these strands. So you're gonna have um, national standards, we don't need to know that. In order to follow grade level used in Texas, um, you, we use the standard six, seventh and eighth. Recurring themes are pervasive in science, mathematics and technology. So there's going to be re- um, themes that are repetitive in science, mathematics and technology in this discipline, in this science discipline, because we want for them to, to sort of see how it crosses over and maths, math and science, you know what I mean? Like we mostly use a whole bunch of math in science, right? In chemistry classes, lots and lots of math and physics, lots of, lots of math. Um, and you can't that divorce those two. Um, you can't separate the science and the math in a physics course. They, they together interdisciplinary are the discipline. So that's sort of the way that this is set up and then you see them going into scientific investigation and re- reasoning, uh, students for forty percent instructional time conducts laboratory and field investigation following safety procedures and environmentally appropriate ethical practices. So it's important for you to look at, again, it's set, it calls for in specifics, the safety protocol. So you for sure have to look those over, what they are for eighth grade. Um, and, and we can just look at them really quickly, what, what they are.
You know, I'm glad we found that, that um, had PDF right there because I was wanting to go over the MSDS and trying to figure out what chemicals are not supposed to go down the drain. You know, down the sink. And I'm like, oh my gosh, okay, I needed, I wanna know this and I, I couldn't find anything online other than possibly group one and the periodic table are the most reactive. Um, and I thought, okay, I think anything with group one elements shouldn't go down the drain. So that's just what I had in mind when it came to the test and I thought if anything, that's what I'm just gonna think about. But I'm hoping the PDF might have that. I don't know.
In my, I'll continue looking. So the Texas essential, your teaks requires that you instructed, you have to give instruction and I'm saying it's not, it's not enough for you to just do it once in the beginning of the year and that's it. Every time you do something, okay, guys, what do we have to remember about safety and when we're doing labs? We're gonna put on our imaginary lab coat, cause we're scientists up in here and we're gonna follow, you know, get them into that mindset and review those concepts. Kinder through sixth grade, they may do uh, laboratory investigations um, following home and safety procedures. And here, six through eight, students conduct field. So here they can do uh, laboratory investigations, not field investigations. They're not gonna go out collecting things uh, in the field. But sixth grade through eighth can, um, and that using these uh, safe and environmentally appropriate ethical practices. And nine through twelve, for at least forty percent of instructional time, conduct field and laboratory investigation. You don't need to know that. So um, here's the face and eye protection. Here's hazardous, the chemical manufacturers require to provide, um, here's to employers required has this labels. Here it is, but.
Doesn't really mention much about specific chemicals, huh?
No, employers must post and mandate.
I guess, cause it'll be where, um, I guess each teacher will have that MSDS.
Exactly, they'll have that there. Yeah. Okay, oh, what happened? Where did it go? I'm trying to see best practices. Let's look at this. Science facilities best practices. No, that's not it. This isn't it. I think I put it in there already. Oh, it's right here. So it's two hundred pages long. Let me see if I could fast forward to eighth grade. Assuming there's a lot of information. There, there might be what you're looking for in here, cause it's two hundred pages, you know?
I wish it was like the search.
I know. The thing is, is that everything from T E A is like this. It's not updated, it's not friendly. That's just, even their forms to be like in compliance with things are just atrocious. Um, laboratory science, I'm looking for cleanup and disposal. Human body samples.
Oh my gosh. You know, I was also thinking about, um,
Oh, I guess.
The ethics on animals. I don't know that, that's another thing that I would like to know about too, the ethics.
It's there, that, that was there. The ethics for animals was here.
That was there, right? I thought I saw something.
Yeah, right here. Responsible use guideline for animals in the classroom. So yeah, that would be something I would
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Certainly look over.
Yeah, cause I Googled some stuff, but I was still kind of like a little, I guess, a little confused a little bit about it.
Look, and it shows you what laboratory science, like all of the laboratory activities are supposed to be enhancing student performance in these domains. Processing skills, their ability to process, to observe, to measure, to manipulate the, the specimens, the object, the tools for measurement. Um, to improve or enhance their analytical skills, their ability to reason, to deduce, their deductive reasoning, critical thinking, their communication skills, ability to speak, to organize information, to listen, follow directions. Their writing skills in the science and uh, conceptualization of scientific phenomena. So their understanding of it and conceptualizing of it. We want for them to become investigative, organizational, creative and communicative and enhance all of those skills while they're in their hands-on laboratory. Like we want them to be talking to their partners and to their uh, groups and to be communicating and utilizing that academic language. Like that's what we want to see happen on, in those um, middle levels and even early school. So for you, you need to look at the elementary level and. So for you, you need to look at the elementary level and the middle school level cuz it's four through eight. So all middle school level science courses must offer laboratory experience for all students. Students at all developmental levels develop, um excuse me, benefit from laboratory experience. A minimum of eighty percent of the science instruction time should be spent on laboratory-related experience. That's a lot of time, you know what I mean? That's a lot of activities. And I have seen some really great science activities. I was just in a science class, an eighth grade science class. And it, she knocked it out of the park. She did the like reminding them of the um, you know, safety measures. Um she was a clinical teacher, so this was the third time that I was visiting her and she has knocked it out of the park every single time. But this time they were doing a hands-on activity. I've seen her give instruction before as well and she's amazing. Um they were mixing uh what were they doing? Mixing hydrogen peroxide with yeast. And then they also did it with water, I think, or trying to.
Were they learning about chemical reactions?
Yeah, they were looking and and they were uh observing like what the difference was as touching it, smelling it. And then like oxygenation wise, like the one of them sort of puffed up. Um whereas the other one didn't, and actually one of them started emitting an odor and one of them did not. And so they were able to like just um describe it in these ways. And um they got up, different people had different roles. The kids worked together. They were like having to help each other measuring and pouring stuff in and once somebody got the yeast. And it was like a little bit, very small town in Crystal City, um Texas. There's only one junior high. And um so there she's like, you know, don't be wasteful of the yeast. And they were so good with like not getting any anywhere and making a mess and just being really responsible. I was so impressed. You could tell that they do labs often because everybody knew their role. Was there, nobody was like acting a fool. It was just amazing. And I love the discussions, yeah. And and at the end, she like, you know, brought it back to a whole class discussion about what they had observed. They were writing things down. She was making sure that they were, they were, you know, writing down their observations as they were. It was just really, really awesome. And the kids had such a good time, like nobody was bored. A hundred percent of the children were engaged a hundred percent of the time. It was like music to my teacher ear, you know? Um just but it should be like that every day for the kids and they should be excited. Like what are we gonna get our hands into next, you know? What are we gonna learn? And let me tell you, nobody complained about writing down the data or answering the questions. Cuz everybody was having a good time and everyone sort of like was interested in what they had learned, the differences and why there were differences in the reactions. And in their observations, right, in the different things. And they were able to actually go back cuz they had done a another lab before Thanksgiving. Um and so they took that out and they compared the two. Um it was also a a reaction type thing and so it was an extension.
That's really cool.
Yeah, it was very, very, she did an excellent job. So I would certainly look through this. Um we, it's so incredibly long. Um I, and like I said, I really wish. Agencies and associations, like I just wanna get to safety forums. Maybe this is a or accident reports. Materious safety data sheet.
There's reactivity, hazard data.
Emergency first aid, you need to know those things. Um but I'm not sure. Field trip, permission, safety, laboratory, safety contract. So you, you do have to get this signed. Everybody has to get this signed, but it is not enough just to discuss this and sign it.
Yeah, because the kids will forget the actual what they signed. So yeah, you have to remind them every time.
Absolutely. And I honestly think that this would um, this should be like um.
Posted?
Yeah, posted.
Posted on the walls or something.
Yeah, at all times, just so that we remember and that we like go over it, you know, refer back to it every time we're gonna do something. Um checklist for science field investigation. Has a representative from the site granted permission, is the site accessible for physically challenged students? And this is important. So if you're gonna go to the creek to uh like collect specimens. And you have a student that's in a wheelchair, then you need to make sure that they're able to still participate in some way. And that, you know, and and if not, then what what does that mean for the student? Because they they have to be able to participate in all of your activities. Um.
You know, that makes me think about maybe kids that are hyperactive or that may be autistic, if you have any in class.
Right. And so if that were the case, then you might want to before, like something I would do as a science teacher would enlist the help. Or see if it was available of a co-teacher or um a para. Um a parent volunteer to be present, to be, to do one-on-one in that case, you know? Um.
Well, what do you think about lab work? Like, I don't know, I'd just be scared of them doing something that I'm supposed to, I guess. Or maybe just pair them up with kids that are for sure know that, you know, what they're doing that just.
That's exactly what you would do. So so like, and it's it's a very common strategy, not just in special ed. But yeah, but just in teaching in general, you know, when you you pair people together, when you put lab partners, you should be putting together. Um carefully, people who can be resources to each other. And you know, GT students typically get things on their own without any instruction and then get bored. And so it often is a nice and fruitful activity to teach. It is an extension of your own learning if you can help someone else learn it. And so you would carefully put together someone you know is responsible and um understands the material already. Won't won't struggle with the student that might, you think, be challenged by it. Because that is gonna be an added leg of support for the student, a resource. And it is a challenge in a way, not saying that you're pawning off the student, don't teach them yourself. But during the activity, doing the questioning, talking, that challenge for the that other student, the higher achieving student. Is um gonna be beneficial for their own learning. And enrichment, really.
Mm hmm. Sounds good.
I don't know what all this is.
Equipment.
Oh. Poisonous plant guide.
Oh, yeah. That would be really nice if it had like pictures of it next to it.
Right, they should.
Yeah, I mean, it's good to know, but you know, it's.
Yeah, it's good to know. You should have your students, give them one each, like when you get a classroom it for extra credit. Always used to do stuff like that for extra credit. Um you give them like one. Their specific and the poisonous part and say, okay, I want for you to make like a information sheet with pictures on it with the name. Just this information I give you and they go out and they find, either they draw it or they they cut out the pictures or they print it out. And um then you can put up a a poisonous plant guide with your own pictures, you know?
You know what? That is a good idea and possibly even just bugs or anything like that. You know how kids, they just wanna pick up all sorts of things. They think they're cute or weird and, you know, there's those spiders, uh recluses. Or just anything that they, you know, with that is colorful can sometimes be the worst. So yeah, that would be another one for them to do too.
All of them, all parts, all parts, all parts, all parts are, it just tells you like what exactly is poison.
Poisonous.
Like all the parts. And so actually, that would be, you know, interesting to to have the students indicate too, like what parts. Identify what parts. Here we are. Required knowledge, tools for inquiry, inquiry. So this is important for you to know. You have to, your students have to know um what these things are. So if it's checked off from all the way, then they have to know it. They have to know it here, starting here. They have to know it about beakers. In the sixth grade, they learn about beakers. Not in the fifth grade. They learn about bowls. But calculators, they've been using them since the third grade. Cameras, third, fourth, fifth grade. Clocks, first, second and third grade. Collecting nets in the fifth grade. Compasses, fifth grade. Fourth grade, third grade, all the way to seventh grade. Computers all the way through. Computer probes, six through sev- seventh and eighth. Cups, kinder. Dissecting equipment, six through eight. Field equipment, six through eight. Graduated cylinders, six through eight. So you know, fourth and fifth grade, they're not gonna be messing with that.
Mm hmm.
Hand lenses, K through five. Hot plates, five through eight. Magnets, I think it's three through seven. Measuring cups. Second grade. Safety goggles, third through eighth grade, spring scales. Sound recordings, telescopes, thermometers, test tubes, timing devices. Water testing kits in the eighth grade. They test water in the eighth grade. Important to know. Weather instrument kits. Tools required from kindergarten through eighth grade are specified in knowledge and skills of Texas knowledge and skills. The tools are necessary for students to know and understand the science concepts. So they have to understand each of these things. They have to know what a petri dish is, what, once they are in the sixth, seventh and eighth grade. Know what it's for, know how, what we use it for, have used it, all of these different tools.
What page was that? I should have been writing down the pages.
Uh, that was page one thirty-one. Yeah, so you have to know what all of these are used for, you know? In in what ways would we use them? How would we use the spring scale in in our classes? And 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 they should all be, hold on, I think that was the wrong. Let's see, going back to. Eighth grade, is this eighth grade or sixth grade? This is sixth grade. They are.
So Texas gives you like, I guess, or the ISD will give you a curriculum where it says, okay, this is what you're gonna teach the kids for this, for six weeks. And then you break it down by yourself, maybe with the help of another teacher, or how do you go about that?
Yeah, I mean, some of them, every desk district is different. You know, some of them have very expensive um curriculum. Um and and some of them, you know, they the in-house is, the curriculum is made by teachers every summer. Um so it's it's um but but you have your own lessons and it's all dictated by this. So they have to in the sixth grade do force, motion and energy and they have to compare and contrast potential and kinetic energy. Now, how you get them to be able to compare and contrast potential and kinetic energy will be up to you and your district. Like they might have already activities that they do for that, or you'll have to come up with them yourselves. You really don't know until you get in somewhere. But your job as a teacher will be to get them before, cuz they're gonna have to know how to do that. How the difference between and how to compare them. They must be able to identify and describe the changes in position, direction and speed of an object when acted upon by unbalanced, balanced forces. You have to measure that. You have to be able to ascertain that before they leave you, they know how to do that. How to be, how to be able to identify and describe changes in position, direction. Now, that might be on a multiple choice test or it might be in a an a lab activity, right? Where you're seeing they can describe and um, you know, predict and um identify. What would happen if you, you know? Apply force. So they have to be able to do all these things in the, under these different domains. You see earth and spe- space science, force and motion, force and motion. You have um organisms identifying the basic characteristic, characteristic, characteristics of organisms. Um prokaryotic, eukaryotic, unicellular, multicellular, uh autotrophic, heterotrophic. And all of those things you have to, they have to know um.
This is in what grade I'm saying?
Excuse me?
This is in, what grade is this one?
This is sixth, this is sixth grade.
No, six.
Yeah, this is sixth grade. So let's jump to eighth grade and see what um eighth graders.
I just get scared sometimes as a teacher. If they ask me something that I can't recall or it's just one of those questions where like, I don't know. I just, I'm a little afraid of that stuff.
Yeah, you just have to research for the day and have your your um, you know, like use models such as Hertz. Sprung Russell diagram for classification. They have to be able to do that in the eighth grade for earth and space. The kids need to. So if they need to know that, do you need to know what the Hertz sprung Russell diagram is for classification? You absolutely do.
The periodic table for the astronomy.
There you go. So you have to, yeah, hold on a moment, let me check the. I just don't know if they're getting enough food from her.
And that's a bad thing, but. That I would even be weighing them. To be honest, I'd be weighing them right now to see how much they weigh. And then wait like three days to see if they're gaining any weight or if they're losing. Because if they're losing, some chances are is that they're not gonna make it.
Yeah, what can I do to make her eat?
To make her eat? Hi, that's a thing. Maybe try broth. I would try chicken broth, something like that boiled broth, chicken. And just give her broth. For now, if she's drinking liquids, then I would just give her broth that these that's got nutrients.
Yeah.
Because if she's not wanting to eat solid foods because she's feeling a certain way, but she is, you said she's drinking water.
Yeah.
Maybe she'd be okay with liquids, at least that.
I just don't feel like she's acting herself. I'm gonna call the vet.
Yeah, uh yeah, I would be real careful because she's in a very critical state right now. And if you let it go by, she'll get even worse and worse and.
I know.
With her, they're they're in a.
And they're fragile, oh my goodness, they haven't even opened their eyes and I just feel like.
Yeah.
Just stress, um such a stress. Anyway, so I would. Um, you know, you know the areas that you need to look into uh specifically. Go go through the the new document that I put in here.
Oh, yeah. When do we just?
Yeah, I think that's gonna be helpful a little bit. Um certainly when you get on campus, but I think that, oh, here's some of the stuff.
Oh, chemicals, there it is.
There it is.
Oh, my gosh, I'm glad we found that. Huh.
Hmm. One thirty-nine.
You know, I had a question and I wanna know your opinion. Cuz you know, I think as a science that that I've been studying science and I tell my husband, I bet you every science teacher. Has possibly questioned this to themselves. I asked, uh uh I asked one of his aunts too, that she's also a science teacher.
Uh huh.
Anyways, uh but I would like to know what you would say. So according to the law of energy and matter, it, they can't be destroyed, can be created or destroyed, only altered, right?
Right.
So wouldn't you say that we're matter, right? Because we have mass within us?
Right, we're matter. And so that's what I told girls.
Die, when we die, if we can be created or destroyed, what happens to us?
I think we're ba- we go back into our energy, whatever energy. I think we're ba- we go back into our energy, whatever energy. Force, because you can't, you can't. Destroyed, our our energy is is like us, like our heartbeat or us, like that's, when that leaves us back into the earth. Like, cause it's just existing in our matter right now, like the essence of me is like my heartbeat, my energy, right? And that can't be destroyed, it's not extinguished, it just changes, and I think it changes back into the universe, and at least that's what I tell my girls. Because I told them the puppies not gone, it just went back.
Yeah, we're made out of atoms, right?
Yeah, absolutely.
Water and whatnot, so we have positive, negative and neutron atoms, so. Somehow or another, this physical form.
Right.
I don't need this just dies out, but that energy. Cause I mean, that's why we shock each other, because of the electrons running through us.
Right.
So somehow that energy that we have, I mean, it just. I don't know, I feel like maybe one of these kids will think beyond and ask me this.
Yeah.
About that.
Yeah, no, and that and they will, you will have kids.
Like essentially, the other thing that just, that just crossed my mind is. The our energy will be altered, so I'd understand if we were actually buried. In pure, pure soil, where. Their tissue, substance will be back into the soil and decompose. But that's the thing that they don't do that, they put us in coffins, so do we actually, I mean, I guess somehow.
My, I hope so, because my son and I have had this same conversation, the exact one, because the Indians used to used to do natural bear- burials. And they still do natural burials, right, because they believe that like. The God is the earth, like the earth is God, right, and so. Like we go back to the earth and our energy is taken back into the earth. And so my son and I had this conversation on the way back from from the valley to San Antonio. Um we were lo- talking about how it's kind of like disruptive and I think maybe that's why possibly the earth's dying, it needs it back. Like the the energy that, it's like the. From whence we came, you know what I mean, like back? And so a lot of energy is being taken.
They see that not even our number two is healthy for the earth because it's too acidic.
Right.
So I mean, I don't know, I guess it just depends if we were healthy at the time or not, I don't know how that goes, but.
I don't know.
But yeah, that's a good, I mean, that's a good analogy that that might be the reason why. Earth is dying, I don't know. It's all our carbon dioxide going into the air.
Everybody's eating too much hamburgers and there's too like.
I know.
Addle industry is crazy now.
Yeah, going to out of place. Okay, so I will look through this um PDF for sure, um jot down a few more notes that I think. I should know, definitely those. That that's a really good PDF, so will will you email that to me?
Yes, um it's, do you have access to the science drive?
Uh what science drive, oh, this one? I believe so, it's just automatically posted there.
Yeah, I it's right here. Yeah, check to see if you can get it. And then the cheeks are here.
Okay, if it's there, I should, yeah, I should be able to have it, I should see it there. Yeah, because I remember you sent it to me.
Okay.
Now ready then, um. Okay, so. I don't know, but I feel like I would like to um. I would like to sign up for the the test in another. The most, I don't even think there'll be any spots open for this month. Uh but I would like to do it, maybe at least by the end of the month or something like that, just so I can go over everything. It's a lot of information that I wanna go through a little bit more. But I feel like I'm like, I don't know, I feel like I'm ready, I feel like the first time I should have gone to the restroom at least twice. I know, because it 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 is overwhelming, I mean, you have to think about, you know. The one question will lead you to all these little things that you're studying. And then you have to really, it makes you think, it makes you think and, you know, and and I should have just.
Cognitively exhausting, it is an ex- a marathon for your mind, it is. Cognitive and you get exhausted, you know, and and need a little bit of stamina. So if you need a break or to go like put some water, like do those test-taking skills, it's meant to be, they add that time. The questions are so.
Yeah, and I know that I feel like that they record stuff like this, right, like they record the time you go to the restroom and all that.
Yeah.
That's why maybe I didn't go, my god, they're gonna say I'm going to the restroom too many times.
There's, they're so strict now.
Yeah, um I was gonna say also, um I think I had asked you about the formulas. Well, they don't give you formulas, all they give you is a periodic table with no names on it, I mean, only the. The symbol, only the, you know, A O for oxygen and whatnot. Uh that's pretty much, that's all they give you, they don't give you any formula. Just in case your future students ask, no, you gotta know everything.
Wow.
Yeah. But I mean, it's it's doable, if somebody else passed it, you know.
Yeah, yeah, it's doable.
Yeah.
That just means that you have to. Print this out and you gotta memorize these things, you know?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yep, I memorized a bunch of the elements already, I memorized that, I remember.
Also, the fifth grade one and memories that one too, because remember they have some.
Yeah, the same thing, I think, sometimes it's the same, fifth grade doesn't give you the. The formulas. Only eighth grade.
Yeah, you're right.
Yep.
But I think there's more formulas in that, if I'm not mistaken.
They are, but you have to know how to manipulate them, that's that's what it is.
Exactly, I tell my students, you have to know how to use the. The tools.
The best way to manipulate them is doing that triangle. It's the easiest way, so you didn't have to memorize, okay, how do I find time, you know what I mean? You just have to manipulate them through using the triangles where you divide them or multiply. That was the best way I found it.
Okay, I'm gonna have to let you.
Yes, thank you for meeting up with me, thank you so much.
Absolutely, yes, absolutely, and um, you know, do do the things that we discussed, like keep on doing. Um what you're doing, look over that um safety manual, because I think it is gonna be helpful.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I'm probably gonna print it out, I mean, it wouldn't hurt to have it on hand.